Again, this is kind of a work in progress for us all. So if there are any glitches, please bear with us. The goal for tonight, as I said, is final discussion of FY21 budget adjustments to give guidance to Dr. Battle and her staff so that then they can bring forward a final list of adjustments at our meeting Thursday night. I'd like to start with basically where we ended at our last workshop on March 31st. There are a number of items that were that are listed on an interactive document that we've been working in. And at the end of the 31st, the workshop on the 31st, we landed basically on a consensus around a ballpark of about 6.8% unassigned fund balance. And with in terms of lines 47 through 58, we landed on a single yes, and that was to increase class size. There were additional info, there's additional information that was requested from Dr. Battle and her team, which is why we're here tonight. First, on the district-wide administrator recommendation, walking distance, and also college in the schools. We'll start tonight with a presentation just to bring everybody up to speed, make sure that we're all on the same page with Lisa Ryder, and then we'll turn the conversation directly over to Dr. Battle, who will start the conversation with her own comments. So with that, Lisa?
I'm sharing the PowerPoint presentation for this evening, which is very similar to what you saw at the last meeting, just to ground everybody on our agenda, where things stand, the interactive model and next step. So as we discussed previously, we had $8.5 million initial projected deficit with initial steps using 7,606 for our projected enrollment. Our voter-approved levy, 1.6 million being adjusted, closing facilities, 2.6 mil, right sizing based on enrollment of 1.3, and additional adjustments and efficiencies of 850,000 for the remaining deficit of 2.150. This number's been brought down a little bit more than this with some adjustments to this 850, which are not related to the items that were mentioned by Chair Alt. And so as we look at this interactive model, I'd like to point out exactly where that is. So there are two line items on lines 45 and 46 where we had a fund mental health contract and the funds needed for capital modifications to special education programming. As we took a closer look at this, we do figure that we have some options of how we may reclassify some expenditures that are otherwise for supplies and materials towards this effort here for capital needs. And so that was the $200,000 number and is now a $50,000 number in our recommendation. So that shifted that figure just a little bit. So as you can see on this summary, it is now a 6.92% with a 1.2 million dollars of spend down of the fund balance with revenues being exceeded by expenditures by that $1.2 million. Going back to the PowerPoint presentation, then we have the timeline that we can discuss at a little later time in more detail, but essentially it's the April 9th and then June, and then some information with regard to online input results that is included as well. I'll turn this back over to Dr. Battle then.
Thank you, Chair, all board members. At this point, you've heard me talk about our different approach this year to budgeting, a priorities-based approach to this year's budget several times, so I won't go through all of that again tonight. Director, Executive Director Ryder did highlight one of the adjustments that has been made since our March 31st discussion. I was asked to go back and look at efficiencies, and at that time, we were to identify in the capital improvement area for that $200,000 that was going to be needed to move special education programs from the 10 elementary to the 8 elementary school. There are a couple of other adjustments. So I do want to say that adjustment, the modification in the capital improvement is a good example of how department, school, and district leaders are always working to refine our budget. As you and our staff members and community members know, this is a particularly unusual year, so it is expected that budget items will be set based on the best information we have, and then refined as we get more information and especially guidance from board members. Another change that you will see is that CIS will not be listed as an additional budget item here. However, there was a concern expressed by, expressed by board members about the financial implications. So Director Amina Oftedal can explain that we can add back CIS courses at Burnsville High School using Title IV funding. And if students do want to have that option, the high school administration could work with those families. Also, I'm no longer recommending the reduction of a 1.0 position in the district-wide administrators' group. There is a lot of work that isn't paid for out of the general fund, including a lot of work that's done at the district office. And so as I look for efficiencies, it's important to remember that some positions are paid for with non-general fund money, and there are some mandated tasks that aren't scalable, meaning that we need a person to do those jobs, whether we have 5,000 students or 25,000 students. That said, we have and will continue to look at ways we can be more efficient while still delivering on our values and priorities and also those mandates. The board also expressed March 31st concerns about the increase in walking distance in regards to Nicolet Middle School. So Executive Director Ryder will have additional information to share this evening. And lastly, we will share themes from our online budget feedback forum, and Director Erin Tinklinburg will be able to share those themes with you. And so with that, we can return to Executive Director Ryder so she can show those adjustments on the list of adjustments and then open it up for questions. Thank you.
So as has been discussed, this walk distance here has been, I have information related to that, the adjustments as indicated for, let's say CIS, that Title IV aid is changed in the comments so that it's there for information. Again, let's go back to this summary page. You can see it's $1.2 million spend down, 6.92, with the only adjustment that is a yes after line 47, being that which is to raise class size by one. I would like to share that in researching the information related to the walk distance, we are, it was brought up last time, the fact that there would be more buses. There will be more buses because of our increased enrollment at Nicolet Middle School with the closure of Metcalf Middle School. That is true. It's not more buses because of the walk distance, however. The walk, increasing the walk distance would actually decrease by two buses. And so the, the challenge for us will be finding room for all of the buses that we anticipate, and we are working on that with our routers, along with our transportation company and our operations and properties director of transportation Glenn Simon. So we will have a plan in play for that. I did have a diagram here to show you of our current, I believe you can see this new diagram. So this is Nicolet Middle School, and so if you were to count all these spaces, you'd come up with 23. And so we'll have to work with this as we are looking at in upwards of 30 buses that we will be finding at, at Nicolet Middle School next year. So we'll work with that piece. And currently, our AM, the buses come over here to the right in the east parking lot because that is closest to the cafeteria, and that's where they drop students. Parents in the morning are dropping over here on the left in the west lot. However, in the afternoon, that is when then parents come into this drive and wrap around and pick up students this way. And as Principal Angie Poole had mentioned today, they also could choose to park and wait for their student. We do need to fortify this space over here so that it's prepared for the number of buses that we're going to need and work with that, and we will be working on that solution. That doesn't necessarily change regardless of what is decided related to the walk distance. We'll need to do that no matter what. So we're prepared to, to begin work on that immediately, and our, our smaller-sized buses, they come along the front side here. So I'm happy to answer any questions people may have, but those, we've, we've had the conversations to identify what the concerns and issues are. We believe that signage will go a long way. We could paint lines if need be. We just need to make sure we're clear in our communication plan to all parents who may be, who may be finding themselves at the site in the morning or afternoons, they're clear on where they should be too. I will minimize this and go back to our list of adjustments and await any direction.
Board members, any questions on the walking distance, the line number 48?
Pardon me. Abigail?
Yes.
I'm here. Yes, I've arrived.
Do we have confirmation of video or are you audio only? Let me look. Hold on.
She's on video. I just saw her as I was scrolling through.
Everything's working. Thank you.
Great, welcome. All right, so we now have all seven board members plus Dr. Battle. So any questions on the walk distance, board members? I'm not seeing any hands raised.
I just want to clarify. I'm a little fuzzy. So looking at the documents, the recommendation to increase the walking distance is not included in the budget. Is that right? There's an add in that box.
Currently, it is not.
Okay. That was my question. Thanks.
Okay. Any others?
This is Leslie. I, well, I don't have a question. I, I'm not a proponent to want to increase the transport, the walk distance at this time. I just think with all the, with all the changes and the shifts to being in new schools, I think this is something that we may consider if we have to cut again in the future, but I'm, I'm not inclined to want to do that right now.
Anybody else have thoughts?
I, I agree with her, which is why I was asking that it's not currently in the recommendation.
Before we, before we get additional thoughts from other board members, I do have a clarifying question for Lisa. So you're saying that next year, we expect 30 buses. If the walk distance increases, that goes down to 28? Or are we expecting 32 buses? And if we extend the walking distance, it goes down to 30?
At this point in time, we have 34 buses between the two schools. As we consolidate them, we believe that there will be some, not all of the students that are currently bused to Nicolet Middle School and Metcalf Middle School will all be at Nicolet because some of them are going to be shifted over to Eagle Ridge Middle School. So my assumption is of those numbers of students going to Eagle Ridge, there will be some on buses, right? So 34 is the count in whole right now. They have not done the routing for next year yet, so I'm going with a higher number at this moment. If we were to change the walk distance, we, this number reflects the savings of two buses, and so that might bring the number down, but also know that that number's going to come down because some of those bus students will be over at Eagle Ridge instead. So I don't have the exact numbers at this point in time. I just got a sense of how many we're talking.
That's fair. Thank you. So the last comment was Director Chester's. Director Chester, you had said that this is, and paraphrasing, not knowing where we're going to land, this might be something that we consider next year.
Correct.
Anybody else have thoughts?
Looks like Darcy's hand is up.
Oh, sorry, Darcy.
Look at me raising my hand and everything. I am also not in favor of increasing the walk distance at this point. We just did that last year, and I think there's enough disruption and changes that are going to be happening this year that it wouldn't be beneficial in many areas.
Looks like Eric, you have your hand up too?
Yes, I am also not in favor of increasing the walking distance.
Anyone else have anything to share before we move on? Let me just have a check. Sorry. Okay. No hands raised. All right. So next. So I'm, I'm a little confused with what to do with line 47. I'm thinking that since there is no recommendation to make the cut, I don't know if there, if there's conversation to be had around this item, board members?
Not around, I don't have anything around this specific line item at this moment.
Nor I.
I think, I, that's my understanding that that is, that, that's, since it's no longer recommendation, then it doesn't require discussion unless someone feels like it should actually go back in.
Correct, and that's why I'm, that's why I just don't, just to make sure.
Okay, that's right. That's, I agree, it should stay out.
Yep. All right. All right. Were there any questions on the new item that Dr. Battle had brought forward, the lines 45 and 46, on the special edu, the special education items?
I don't have any, any questions. I'm just glad that we're making sure that we're still funding the mental health efforts in our schools. I think it's something that helps sets us apart as a district by making that very intentional.
Did anybody else hear what Leslie said?
I did hear what she said, yes.
Yes, I heard it.
I did not. Can someone paraphrase? It sounded like-
Let me try again. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I said that I didn't really have any questions, but I am very supportive of the assets going in to support the mental health contracts within our district because it sets us apart. It's something that I'm glad that we make an intentional effort for.
So college in the schools. I guess the question is, and I think we talked about this last time, there's a budget conversation which Dr. Battle has indicated could be addressed by Title IV funding, correct? And, and then there's the philosophical conversation about who we want to be as a district. And I guess the question, board members, are there questions about those two items? Darcy?
I, I do have, well, first of all, I think it is, it, I think it is who we are as a district to have CIS classes. We make such great efforts to write, provide a variety of programming and opportunities for students to prepare for life after high school while they're in high school. And I think this is just another example of it. So I think it fits very strongly into our values and direction as a district. I, I, I'm curious what, what the Title IV, I'm 100% in favor of putting this back and putting it in the budget and funding it again next year. I'd like to be clear on what the Title IV funds are, just to make sure that I understand how that gets used, what, how it's applied.
Yes, how it's used is to fund our college and career part of it. And so I'll have Director Amina Oftedal share some more information. Amina?
Yes, Title IV is a somewhat new funding source. It appeared probably originally as a block grant and was competitive, and it's actually identified as for innovative school and well-rounded education. And so this, it moved from being an application to an entitled fund along with our other title grants, and it needs to be used in three different ways. And there's a certain percentage of the dollars have to be spent in those ways. One of the areas is on social, emotional, and student's health and safety. The other way, the other need is on technology infrastructure, so it can only be spent on hardware. And the third one is on a well-rounded education, and it's used to support not the struggling learner as much as it is for the advanced learner. And so it should be directed toward things like world language programs, college preparatory programs, advanced learner education, those types of things that really address the needs of students on that, in that area. So we have had the dollars. This will be our third, coming up will be our third year for those. And in the past, we've allocated those dollars to, to our private school, St. John's, has used, addressed the technology portion for, for our percentage of expenditures, and we've used it to fund part of the salaries for our behavior analyst and support our PBIS program. And the third component has been used to support some professional development as well as part of the salary for one of our coordinators who helps guide advanced learning. And we have come out quite a bit on the far end of that, and so we have a significant carryover, and we have not allocated those funds significantly over the last couple of years.
Thank you. That, that does answer exactly my question about how this is funded. Thank you.
Board members, any other questions on this?
I was going to ask if any other, if the, where the, how the money had been used previously was, they were going to lose out, but it doesn't sound like she said it's coming from savings.
Yes.
So that's, that's really good to hear. Yeah.
But it's a, it's basically a reserve, it's a fund balance. It's a savings account that's, that's being depleted.
Actually, in the first year, we, we had the option to move the money to our Title II professional development, which we, which we did and used it for professional development because there, it came out so late that it really wasn't time to put together a comprehensive plan for it, where we already had a comprehensive professional development plan. The second year, those dollars came forward, and it still wasn't very clear in District 191 where the focus needed to be, but we did want to go ahead and support the technology needs and the social, emotional learning, and we were able then to recoup some of the salary out of the general fund into the Title IV for that coordinator.
I'd also like to say that the federal funds are only received once they've been used. So they're not sitting in our fund balance in any way, shape, or form. They're an additional entitlement that, as you know, when I did the revenue side of the budget, we're working off from what we anticipate as the normal amount coming from Title IV, so the carryover portion would be above and beyond. And so as we do the detailed line item budget, and as we learn more about those actual entitlement allocations, we will be updating the budget. It may not be until the revised that you see it in the budget, but it would be there.
And I would say going forward that we wouldn't then allocate any dollars to the Title II fund, but we would keep them in Title IV, and then we would have those additional funds to use to support college in the schools or other college preparatory.
So this is, so you're, you're structuring this so it's, it's going to be sustainable?
Absolutely.
That's always our concern.
Yes, this is a reoccurring entitlement.
Okay. And not competitive?
And not competitive.
Okay. Board members?
Oh, I'm, yep, me. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. No, I'm very supportive of having, bringing the CIS back, especially seeing Director Oftedal's presentation the last time, seeing the comparison of the numbers of participants from the previous year to this year, and then also realizing that this does fall with us and our mission to have students be future-ready as well because it's helping students have a leg up in terms of going on to post-secondary and being able to offset any potential financial burdens that having to take college classes actually in college could maybe be a block for them if, if they can actually get some of that support while in high school.
Thank you, Director Chester. Other comments?
I also will support putting the CIS back in.
Okay, thank you, Director Miller.
I support it as well. Yeah. Very happy to be able to reinstate this.
And this, and this would be, again, I'm just clarifying, this would be for next year. And Doctor, would you say that administrators would be able to work with students to be able to get them into those classes even though registration has been complete?
Yes, Chair Alt and Brian Gersich can give you more detail about that, how that would work.
Yeah, thank you, and thanks, board members.
Yeah, uh, thank you. Thanks, board members. Um, I did have a good conversation and opportunity to visit with Dave Helkey. Our principal at BHS was very confident we would have the ability to reregister students. Certainly, certainly that's going to take on a different look right now because of the environment that we're in comparatively to other years. When they may have been reregistering for stu, students for various reasons. Um, but I would monitor that closely with, closely with the team, make sure they've got the resources needed to do that. Um, you know, I'm not going to volunteer people for work, but I also know just from last spring through this year. Having some conversations myself with teachers at the high school that teach CIS. Uh, they're pretty passionate about this, and I think they, they would also probably be willing to support communication if needed. To make sure students knew that this was an opportunity. Um, and don't forget that a lot of our courses were previously run. So there may be students that already signed up for a calculus course that are now going to realize it's just going to transition to CIS. It's capturing those who maybe didn't sign up for it if they decided they would prefer it as a CIS. But I'm very confident, working with the team and with the amount of time we have here, that we can still get this done for the fall.
And the, and the one benefit, just thinking in terms of the funding. Because part of the conversation last year was the fact that the state was not fully funding reimbursing for college in the schools courses. Obviously, the benefit to how you're structuring it, how you're proposing to structure it. Means that if the state somehow changes its reimbursement formula, um, to increase it. Then we would have additional title dollars either to use in that same line or in a different way. Which, which would still be in keeping with the requirements for those title dollars.
Um, I would want to defer to, uh, Director Ryder, uh, but I believe if we get reimbursed. Those funds could go back into the general fund.
Oh, okay.
So the revenue that we receive is separate from the cost that we have to pay for the opportunity to run the CIS programming. So the sixty-six thousand is not personnel that you're seeing there. That really is more reflective of the charge that it is from the U of M for each CIS course offered.
Well, I, I know that we really did not want to make this cut last year. Um, and it was a very difficult conversation for us. So to have this comeback create as, you know, as a creative restructuring and allowing us to bring back college in the schools. Without, um, compromising our budget situation, um, I think it's really lovely. Any other comments?
Yeah, but you know, could you have Lisa put her, her chart up again, the spreadsheet up again?
Sure. Lisa?
I apologize that I missed those March meetings, but we are again in those interesting times. Um, I want to make sure I'm understanding this. The lined items. Were. Were, in other words, we're choosing to not eliminate them or to eliminate them. Am I making sense?
Yep, you're, you're, you're wondering about the strike-throughs versus the no's and yeses.
Just so I'm understanding this.
So, and I think the college in the schools, actually, I mean, it's, it's kind of a, um, logistical conversation.
Yes.
Technically, that is bring, being brought back, but that sixty-six thousand dollars is not going to be applied to the general fund, which is what we're talking about.
Okay.
It is that, I mean.
Okay, that helps, but I, the, um. The elementary, for example, the school patrol stipends. The removal of those, in other words, we won't have school patrols. Am I interpreting that correctly?
Nope. So the, 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 the N's and the Y's originally represented Dr. Battle and her team's, uh, recommendation for each item. And also, um, if you look farther up, anything that we already made a decision on in terms of school closures. Those decisions have already been made.
Okay.
In this section, these are the items that we've been talking about. The strike through means that they've been removed from consideration. So the media EAs have been removed, that reduction has been removed from consideration. We're not.
Got it. Good. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Chair Alt, if I may?
Yes, Lisa.
Um, just a clarification, I do think I need to change the N on line fifty-two a Y. And, um, it, although it is true that, um, it will be covered by funds. That are not yet included in my revenue, it will be included in your general fund expenditure. And as, and as we do the adopted budget, the federal funding is typically a little bit. Less than what you might end up in the revised budget because of carryovers, right? So what we'll do is we will code that, um, extra dollar of sixty-six thousand to the Title Four. And then as we receive that additional revenue, it'll come out of a contingency account and it will, it will balance that expenditure. So it, far in the details in the weeds I am, I know, but I just want to be clear that it is part of the general fund. It is just that it is a part of the federal funds within the general fund.
Got it.
Thank you.
Does that make sense to everybody? I'm seeing, it's nodding. Yes, okay, great. All right, um, there were other items. Um, I know, Dr. Battle, you, um, had, um, members of your team. That you wanted to, um, bring forward a couple of other items as part of this conversation?
Uh, yes, um, Erin Tinklinburg to share the themes from the online forum. I'm wondering if, uh, Lisa should finish her section and see where we are in terms of, uh, the numbers. And then we can have Erin join us with the themes.
Leslie, yes, question?
Yes, um, did we want to put a strike through on the transportation as being off the.
Yeah.
Books too?
Okay.
Okay, then I think, um. I think this is then reflective of the board's guidance. Is that fair to say? And I'm just going to scroll up a couple here, just so you can see the other lines. That were discussed earlier. And then slowly move down. So then as we move to the summary. You will see that we're at, uh, one point two-six spend down of fund balance. And, um, with these assumptions for how much we would see in our reserve funds. You would see a six point eight-seven percent unassigned fund balance is projected.
Which was kind of where we landed on the thirty-first, so. I'm seeing heads nodding. Okay. We're good.
And you can then move this over to. You want the slideshow up next then, Dr. Battle?
Yes, thank you. And then Erin can go through the online input results summarized?
That would be wonderful.
Okay, I'll be happy to do that. And, uh, I'm gonna, Lisa, if you'd go ahead and just stop presenting, I'll pull up the results on my own. Uh, and this will be, um, pretty, uh, pre-brief, um, for a couple of reasons. All right, you should be able to see the numbers there. Uh, we had, uh, just forty-four responses to the budget input, um, survey. Uh, we did receive quite a few over the last week after we pushed it out again. Um, we had pushed it out before all of the. Uh, closing of schools and, and everything else that's kind of been going on. So obviously, I'm sure people's attentions were a little bit elsewhere as well, but we did receive forty-four responses. Um, I didn't want to bring up the entire entirety of the responses because we didn't ask people's permissions. Um, to, uh, share their information live on, uh, YouTube or anything else like that. Um, but we did break it down kind of by category by, um. What they mentioned in their suggestions. So you can see under suggested priorities. And we basically just asked people two questions. Uh, what would you like to see the district have as priorities as it sets its budget? And, um, what are some efficiencies you might suggest as well? So under priorities, you can see, um, quite a few for direct student support and class sizes. Um, as well as electives and teachers, so really a wide variety, um, a handful for media, media center support as well. And then under efficiencies, a number of people suggested administrative reductions, uh, and then a couple of other items there too. Not a lot of data, certainly not a scientific survey, um, but this is what we received.
And, um, also I wanted to thank, uh, you, Erin, and your team for bringing, granted, it's a, it's a smaller sample than we've gotten in years past. But I, I know we've all appreciated getting that information in advance of, of today's workshop so that we can, you know. Get a snapshot of, of, of those people that have, um, shared their thoughts with us. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any questions for Erin on this?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and, um, Dr. Battle, is there anything else? That your team, that you or your team wanted to, wanted to talk about? I, I think that kind of finishes the, I can't see the presentation, but. I feel like that kind of wraps it up unless board members, you have comments or questions? Okay. Great, so, um, just to summarize, um, and Lisa, I think you did a nice job, um, a couple minutes ago. Basically, uh, we've landed, uh. On increasing class sizes by one and, um. Nice to be able to bring college in the schools back, really. As I said before, this, it wasn't an easy decision for all of us last year. And knowing that we're able to bring it back with slightly, a slightly different funding stream. That will be a benefit for our students. Board members, any other comments that you would like to make?
No, full credit and appreciation for, um, a creative way to use those Title Four funds. And understand that that is a, a funding source we could use for this is, it is, it's a great representation of the values of our district for our students. And, um, so full appreciation for, um, that creative use of, um, funding application, creative and appropriate use of funding application. And, um, so all the Dr. Battle and the whole team for work, this is. Budget season is not fun. Lisa, I'm sure you love budget season, but the rest of us, this is, um, it's tough, it's tough. And we greatly appreciate all the work everyone puts into it.
Thank you, Darcy. Anyone else? Dr. Battle, any closing comments?
Uh, I think we had one. Uh, thank you for that acknowledgement. Um, I think we had one more slide, uh, about next steps. So this Thursday is a regular board meeting. Um, and then in June, we have two dates. Um, the board must approve the budget by June. Um, so didn't know if you wanted to highlight those and, um. Yes. Yeah, so April ninth and then June eleventh and June eighteen.
Yep. That's our schedule. All right, well. Thank you, everybody. Um, I would like to echo, uh, Darcy's comments. I know that budget season is not easy for anybody. And it's, it's emotionally grueling and mentally grueling. And I really appreciate all the, um, really, um, great conversations that we've had as a group, both as a board. And, uh, with staff and all the creativity that's, that's come forward. Really, really great stuff. With that, we will adjourn our workshop. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Good night.